Patient via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment, please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation. Thank you. And the select word meetings can be viewed by going into the cable videos icon on the homepage of the town website.
All right, with that, we'll dive right in and up first, Kevin, the Essex Regional Retirement System.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, Mr. Costa. Thank you for joining us tonight. We received a letter a couple of weeks back, few weeks back from Essex Retirement with a question around an option to increase COLA's seniors. I'm sorry, for retirees. And it comes from the state. It's an option that the board, as I understand it, from Essex Retirement has asked us and other communities in the retirement system to consider. I had a great conversation with Mr. Crossroad last week. I got to talk through some of the details on it, as well as some overarching items with regards to the retirement system. And we said it might be a lot of sense to be here tonight to talk to the board about what is being proposed. No vote tonight. I think certainly we want to have time to reflect and do something like this at a regular meeting if it's something the board decides to do. But I thought this would be a great opportunity to kind of ask some questions and understand what the proposal is and have some discussion on it. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Chuck Costa, who is the Executive Director of the Retirement System.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you for having me here tonight. We tried to, in the letter we sent out, explain a little bit what this is, and then Kevin gave a good overview of it. Every year, the Retirement Board has an option to grant a COLA of up to 3% for our retirees. And that is applied to what we call the COLA base, which for our system is at $16,000. So when we approve a COLA each year, it's applied to everyone's benefit up to $16,000. If they get a benefit that's $20,000, the 3% still is only applied to the $16,000. And generally, the highest we can go is 3%. The legislature started considering earlier this year giving retirement systems the option to go to a 5% COLA for fiscal year 23. And as part of that discussion in the legislative process, there was a second step that would go beyond just the boards, the retirement boards' vote. And in the case of a regional system like Essex, it would require two-thirds of the municipal units to approve the additional 2%. So we sent, the board voted in December to ask our 19 communities to consider an additional 2% for the retirees of the system. This is a one-time deal, basically, in that it has to be done in fiscal year 23. So it has to be applied before June. So we sent out our note, I think in January, and asked if possible, if communities could take a vote by April 1st, which would give us some time then to tally the vote and then apply the benefit to retirees, which is retroactive back to July 1st. So there's a few steps that we have to do if this were to pass. It does take a vote of the select board in each community, and upon the vote, we asked each community to notify us how you voted. The two-thirds for us is 13 communities. So once we get to 13, we can apply the benefit. If we don't get to 13, we don't apply the additional 2% this year. They stay with the 3% that was approved earlier in the year. So that's the process that was set up. This was passed, I think, back in November by the legislature. And the board acted on it in December. And we sent the notices out in January. And so now it's before all the municipal units of our system. So I'd be happy to take any questions about the process or about the retirement system that you may have regarding this additional COLA option.
Yeah, I've got a question. Chuck, my name is Cam Brown. I'm on the Select Board here. Nice to meet you. How many communities have voted in the affirmative to increase this to 5% that you've talked to so far?
So far, we have not had one community get back to us with either a positive or negative vote. I think everybody's right in the process of scheduling time for it. But no one's gotten back to us on either way yet.
Thanks.
Chuck, my name is Boyd Jackson, member of the Board of Selectmen. I should say Select Board, sorry. I have a question for Catherine. Catherine, can you hear me? What does that mean to us dollar-wise? Have you got a number on that?
I don't have a number on that. But Chuck, would that be, would that be 2% on top of what the assessment is, or?
It's additional 2% on the COLA, but it's not tied to the assessment. The way the COLAs work is that it's built into the valuation study that's done every two years, and it gets built into the appropriation. So if this was approved, there won't be a special assessment to the whole system or to the communities that voted for it. It would be applied, just like the 3% COLA has always been applied, where it becomes part of the cost of the system. Every two years, the actuaries evaluate that cost and develop a funding schedule out of that. So this becomes an additional cost to the system that will be funded over time. There's not in the past, there's been early retirement incentives where communities have adopted it just for their community. And there's been a special assessment associated with that. This is different than that. This just goes into the assets and liabilities of a system that get factored into what communities have to pay through the appropriation of where, you know, until we get to full funding in 2035.
Would we expect to see a higher assessment next year with the, if the incomes are going up, or does that not make a difference then either?
It's, well, you know, it's an expense, and it will add to the liabilities, whether it gets offset by investments or other things. You know, all depends on what comes out in the valuation study. PARAC, the State Oversight Agency for us, the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, which goes by PARAC, did send out a sort of quick little spreadsheet calculation that retirement systems can use. And it takes the number of retirees you have, what your COLA base is, and the 2%. And when we did it, our cost that we came up for, if this is done over the course of our whole funding schedule, not just in one year, but, you know, over time, is about $6.5 million.
Sorry, Chuck, say that number again.
About 6.5 million.
Thank you.
Over what time period?
Over the time period till we get to full funding, which is 2035. So this would be an expense that would get added into the system. And then when they evaluate our assets and liabilities, what this is, this would be an additional liability. And we'd see, you know, if it's offset by our assets and our investments and our returns and so forth. Much like the 3% COLA is done, that is factored into every valuation study. So this would be an additional amount that would just be rolled in with the other COLAs that are considered.
And that six and a half number is across the entire system, just to be.
Across the entire system, yeah. It's a system-wide cost. It's not going to be if you're one of the units that vote for it, you're not going to be just the ones paying for it. If you're one of the ones that vote against it, you're not going to not pay for it. It just becomes part of the annual appropriation paid by all the units.
It would be great to know kind of what, what Topsfield pays out of the entire system, just to ballpark kind of what the impact is going to be.
Well, in your appropriation, Topsfield generally runs about 3.5% of the total. So if, you know, it's a $45, $47 million appropriation, your amount tends to be around 3.5% or so.
Ms. McDyall, when I met with Mr. Costa, he provided me some really great information. I have it in my fingertips. Fiscal '21, our appropriation was 3.54%. Fiscal '22 is 3.46%. Last year was 3.48%, and this year it's 3.64%. This is fiscal '24. So it's pretty consistent, doesn't really shift, hasn't shifted too much in either direction. Comparatively to some of the other communities, we've been pretty consistent, as I understand it.
Chuck, it's Boyd Jackson again. And excuse me, but I'm not the brightest bulb in town. So if you can tell me a little bit how this really works. What we're talking about is putting an additional bunch of money into the retirement fund. And we're doing it probably for a good reason, because inflation in 2023 was high enough that we're trying to make up for that and give people the benefit of helping them out with those problems, probably. But how does that, how does that work out? And what does it really mean to a guy or a woman that retires eight years from now?
Well, it's probably not going to do much for someone who's going to retire in the future, because this is a one-time thing for those who are getting benefits right now. So we do this every year. We, the board has an opportunity to vote a COLA. Normally, it's capped at no more than 3%. So we can vote up to 3%. And then it gets applied to that COLA base amount of $16,000. Every two years, there's an actuary that comes in who does what we call a valuation study, and it takes in all our assets, all our liabilities, and it figures out what, you know, our unfunded liability is and what needs to be paid by everyone. The 3% that we have the ability to offer every year is built into that valuation study. So even if we just didn't vote a COLA in a given year, or we only voted 2%, the actuary always includes a cost of 3% COLA when they do their projections of our liabilities. The additional 2% would be new, would be in addition. This was a special act of the legislature. It's a one-time thing for fiscal year 23. So if we do it, and that additional amount that I mentioned earlier is added in, that becomes part of our liabilities that will be rolled into the next valuation study, and will become another cost of the system. And then they'll see, you know, how that matches up against our assets and our investments. And there'll be some amount that, you know, will be the unfunded liability, and the schedule will be adjusted as it is every two years.
Thank you very much.
Chuck, could I, could I ask you, trying to relate it to a municipal employee who's working now, they get an increase in their base salary, and then every year going forward, the increase is based upon that new salary range, as opposed to a bonus check that doesn't hit their base salary. Is this a bonus check outside of their base, or does this increase their base, and every year afterward, that's their new base amount upon which the COLA is applied? So it's cumulative?
It increases the benefit that people who will be eligible for this will get. But the base amount is 16,000. So whatever, if they go from 30 to 31, because we do this extra two, next year's COLA, if it's 3% again, is still going to be applied to the 16,000 base.
But they still get the additional amount, the 2% every year after?
It's a one-time, the additional 2% is a one-time thing. So assuming the legislature doesn't do anything else, next year, we'll be back to the 3% option, which we do every year. And then if it's approved, which usually is every year, the 3% would then be added to the 16,000 base for all the eligible retirees, you know, next year and the year after and the year after that.
Right. Let me say it a different way. I understand that the COLA only applies to the $16,000 base. But if someone were making $100, and they got this additional $2, they'd be getting $102. And they would get $102 every year going forward forever?
Yes.
It will continue.
Yeah, their benefit will go up, and then, you know, it will stay there. It's not going to, it's not going to be taken back.
Okay, so it's not like a bonus check for one year. It stays on their salary, and they get it every year.
It's the same, same as the 3% COLA, but now for one year, it's going to be 5%.
Okay, thank you.
If it's approved.
Right. Any other questions?
Just again, on the 6.5 million, 3.5% is generally Topsfield's portion. That's $227,000. That's not, we're not talking about that coming in as a cost this year, right?
No, that, the 6.5 million is the cost over time until we get to full funding that.
Gotcha. So do we have any idea what the annual increase or the annual impact to the town budget would be?
I think we have to figure out how many retirees are paid in, or in that system. So Catherine, we'd have to figure out, you know, what's the gross number of retirees, and then take the spread, the 2% of 300 bucks or whatever, 320, you know, something like that, and multiply that, and we'd have the number, right? You're on mute.
So, so Chuck, you said we're at 3.5% though, of the total is our, is the, is the town share in terms of what we pay into the retirement system? I think people are mixing up the assessment with what's going on with the 2%. You're actually asking for just a 2% COLA?
Yes.
Because you've already voted the 3%, which is within your right. But to go over that up to 5%, you need the board's approval. But it's not going to have a direct, that was the earlier question, it's not going to have a direct relationship on our assessment. It could be filtered out through the, through what's going on with the market, or absorbed in their budget, or we could see an increase. But it would be, of the total, it would be 3.5%, roughly.
That's correct. This is going to become part of the cost of the retirement system over time. And there's, you know, on the other side, we have our investments. We have, you know, other things that become part of our assets. And then they put it all in the mix and see, you know, how much of our assets offset those liabilities. So you know, in theory, this cost could be offset by, you know, several good years of investment returns. And that would have a, you know, positive effect on the unfunded liability. And, you know, the opposite is true if you have several years of bad returns. So this becomes part of the cost of the system. There's not going to necessarily be a direct line from approving this to how it will affect your appropriation starting next year. There's a whole bunch of other factors that could influence how the appropriation goes over the next several years.
So for somebody trying to ask, saying, how much is this going to cost us? You don't have an answer to that. Nobody has an answer to that.
Not to a particular unit, but to the system, that 6.5 million is what the cost of the system will be over time.
Chuck, can I ask the cost of the system over the past 10 years? Has it gone down at all with good market performance?
The appropriation for the units has gone up and continues to go up for a short period of time until we start to turn the corner and the unfunded liability starts to go down. Generally, over, I would say, the last five years, the market returns have been very good. And I think part of what generated this for the legislature was that in 2021, the returns were outstanding. They were, you know, among the highest that Massachusetts retirement systems have seen in a while. 2022 has been a whole different year, and the returns have actually been down. Usually when they do our valuation and they're factoring in the market fluctuations, the X-rays will do what they call five-year smoothing of costs, so that it's not, you know, always wildly up and down. They'll, they'll spread out losses over time. They'll spread out gains over time, so that it's a more consistent line, as opposed to going up and down with each fluctuation in the market. But generally, over time, over the last few years, the market has been pretty good.
And with that, with a good market, has our assessment gone down? Are we charged less out of the system?
No, the assessment has gone up. The way the funding schedule goes is there's an overall increase each year until we get to a full funding level, and then it settles.
Okay. Would the board mind if I asked a couple of questions?
No, go ahead.
When was the last time the legislator allowed it to go over the 3%?
I don't recall any time previously that they've done it. Years, and in the 12 years, it's always been capped at 3%.
Okay, I just was wondering if this has been like, if what the outcome was in the past when it was voted. And then, and you had talked about the unfunded liability. So we have a, we have a, like an aggressive OPEB policy that takes, that kicks in more so in 2035. With that 6 million, 6.5 million, is that going to change that date, the 2035 date for the, for the retirement system?
Not in and of itself. The, everybody, the overtime boards have to be fully funded by 2040. Our board has set 2035. Most boards do it in advance of 2040, in case there's something dramatic, and they need to spread out, you know, any losses that can extend the funding schedule. But ours has been 2035 for over a decade, and the board has always tried to, you know, be pretty consistent with keeping that. And there's been no discussion about extending that out further. If anything, there's been talk maybe of shortening it to 2033 or 2030. But we've been at 2035 for a decade.
And when that, when that goes, when that date hits, so when, if it goes down, then we see, that's going to have a direct impact on our assessment at that point.
Yes, it will drop dramatically.
Dramatically.
Because you'll just, once we get to full funding, the unfunded liability part goes away. And now you're just paying the cost of what the employees are incurring in that given year. So every year, you know, people earn money, they earn credit, their benefit goes up a little bit. You'll just be paying the cost of that at that point and not paying this unfunded liability that's been a burden on everybody for a long time.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, because I think there's a little bit of confusion, because I think we felt that the assessment was higher this year, but that has a lot to do with paying down the liability, the unfunded liability.
Correct. The total appropriation has gone up about 7.5% for several years. This year went up, this is for everybody, the whole appropriation went up about 6.5%. Because of some of the good returns we've had over the last few years, we were, the board was able to drop that a little bit and shorten the number of years where you have this, you know, fairly significant 6%, 7% increase.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody have anything else?
I just wanted to thank Catherine for her wise input. Thank you.
Of course, always. Well, Ms. Costa, thank you very much for coming tonight.
You're welcome. And Kevin and I have had a lot of conversations back and forth on different things. If anybody has any other questions, you know, feel free to contact me directly or have Kevin send it to me. I'd be happy to respond.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the warrant. Just a note before we get into this. We know that this has just been received. That is not an error. That is by design. We are on schedule with this delivered. So our conversation tonight is in no way meant to be an in-depth conversation on the warrant. This, our schedule next week is that in-depth conversation on the warrant. So what we're doing tonight is receiving it. We'll do kind of a high-level review of it. If people have high-level questions, you know, about process or anything like that, then, you know, have at it. But again, this is not meant to take a look at each one of these warrants and have a discussion about them this week. The idea is to take a look at it. If you have questions during the week, reach out to Kevin, reach out to whoever, get your information, and then next week, we can have that kind of in-depth conversation. All right? And with that, I turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Select Board. So per our schedule we put out months ago, tonight's the night we present to the Select Board Draft 1 of the warrant. You'll notice it's labeled version 2.1. And the reason for that is an initial version that was being worked on. I had a couple of items, because there's some technical ones in this warrant this year that I wanted to have KP take an early look at. So because it's been distributed to them to keep for version control purposes, it's labeled V2, I'm sorry, V2.1, with the date of 2/15/23 as our version 2, but our first official version that we're looking at as a team. So just some, some high-level items to point out. As you're going through this, please note that the yellow items are placeholders. They're either language from last year, numbers from last year that need to be updated, or things that just need to be clarified. They'll be inserted as we go through our processes. And also, with that said, Article 2, you'll notice there is no ARPA allocation this year. We do not intend to utilize that as a mechanism to balance. And so that is removed from the version of last year's. Articles 3 and 5, which is our general operating budget, which includes the elementary schools, and Article 5, which is the Mascanomic Regional School District Assessment. Those two have language that incorporate placeholders for overrides. And we've had, I know, a lot of conversations around that. And we will be bringing the elementary schools in for a special meeting once it's scheduled to discuss their budget process in more detail and their intentions with the Select Board in the coming weeks. In addition to that, Article, the water article, Article 4, those are still placeholders as the Select Board, the intention is to have the Select Board vote. The water budget at one of the upcoming meetings, until that's voted, that number's a placeholder. And we're also waiting for the indirect numbers from the Treasurer's Office, insert. We're also waiting the Essex Agricultural, North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District numbers. There is an email out, an email received late this afternoon from the Superintendent, confirming the enrollment number, giving us a look at our rolling four-year average per student cost, and letting us know that they're holding their budget before submitting it, so they have more information from the state of what the state allocation and funding will look like for the Essex Tech. So we have some placeholders in there. For budgetary purposes, we're, we have a 10% increase at this time. And we do have a two-person, two-student increase from last year, which is two students more from the year prior to that. So we're up four over the last two years. And with the proration as an impact on the budget, obviously.
Did you just say that with the two students new this year, we're up 10%? That's what it looks like for Essex Tech?
So the budget is likely to increase mainly driven, appears to be, by salary. And with that, they anticipate greater than what a typical increase might look like. In addition to that, our proration will increase likely due to the two additional students that we have. But that's washed out in the hole. If they expand it overall, if everyone averaged two more students, then that would be a softer impact to us. But the 10% is a placeholder number based on our five-year rolling average. Number in here now is representative of last year's number. For the model right now, we're holding, I think, 488, but that's subject to go up. I wouldn't hold that as a hard and fast number at this time.
Okay, I was just trying to compare. This, last year, we added two people to Essex Tech, and it was a 5.5% increase. We're adding another two people this year, and I think it's going to be 10%. That's kind of where it's coming in right now. That's a big jump.
It certainly is. And once we have the budget, we can kind of understand better what that looks like. And that number is an internal estimate that we're putting to there until we have better confirmation. Hopefully, it's less. But just setting expectations and some of the indications in the email I received today, we want to be really conservative with it, because I have a feeling it's going to be on the higher side this year.
So the 10% is the amount, is an estimate of how much more we're going to be paying, not an increase in the Essex Tech budget. It's a combination of increased budget and increased Ted from Topsfield.
Yep.
Do we have any idea how much that school budget has gone up?
We do not. They have not submitted that, but they did give indications that they have a significant increase on the staffing costs, teacher costs.
Sounds familiar. And process-wise, since you said process was part of this, right? I know how we do the elementary schools. I know how Masco works. What is the process for Essex Tech? Are we just handed a bill?
Yep. In essence, that's how the process works. We get their bill statutorily. That's the number. It's based on proration. They have a school committee that votes their budget, just like the elementary schools would.
All right, and we have a couple of representatives on that?
We do.
Do we? Okay.
So, yes, so beyond that, we have the consent agenda, which is basically the same. There is in there this year Article 13, which is currently Article 13. Sorry, yep, Article 13, which is the Police, Fire, Special Emergency Leave Fund. We've had somebody on leave for a little while now, and that fund's starting to get lowered. 2017, we adopted that, just like the employment. Two thousand seventeen, we adopted that, just like the, uh, Employment Compensation Fund and the Compensate Absent Fund, um, to be funded, this is the first year, the last, at least in the last three years, where we're looking to add funds back into it. Um, if, as needed. Um, I'd also note that the Facilities Repair and Maintenance Fund, we're already looking at the ways we're going to balance our budget. Um, and there's a, an additional line item in the police budget for five thousand dollars. Um, we're looking to take that out of the budget for the maintenance of that facility and put it in, out of the general fund and put it in as a free cash allocation instead through this line item. Um, in the effort again to balance the budget. Um, so that's why that num- number has gone up from twenty-five to thirty thousand. And then, um, the, the rest, the remaining, um, next handful are, are, are capital items funded primarily from free cash, um, and other means. Um, I'll also note that, uh, the zero-turn mower, currently Article nineteen, was approved for free cash allocation to purchase that last year. We actually purchased one last year with the ARPA money. And so we're actually only looking for an allocation of two thousand dollars more so that with the cost increase of the equipment, to be able to purchase another one this year, and that's part of our regular, uh, annual replacement of that equip, that piece of equipment. Um, and then just we head into the water, I'll, I'll point to Article twenty-one, um, which talks about the debt that we'll be taking out and that's built into the motion, the recommendation. So, um, we've talked about that in the capital, but that's the, uh, authorization that, for us to take the debt out on that particular item.
And then.
Kevin, sorry to interrupt, and that warrant, Article twenty-first, is it possible, uh, down at the bottom where it says the majority of design work has been completed and the size of the tank will increase to eight hundred and fifty thousand gallons? Can you say what it's increasing from?
Um, I, I would not want to give you inaccurate information.
No, not tonight, no, 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 not tonight. I'm saying for town meeting, I mean, for the, for, for the article itself.
Absolutely, Greg Cromwell will, will be available at town meeting at the very least, and we'll get that number for the Select Board ahead of that, obviously. Um, I, I don't know it off the top of my head right the second, I know that Greg could rattle off without hesitation.
Tonight doesn't matter, yeah.
Um, and it is increasing though, I will say that, based on the size, um, sizing of the equipment over the last seventy years since the last one was built, um, there is a greater need for, for storage capacity.
Uh, just to be clear, the only reason I said it is when someone begs the question or asks the question, okay, it's eight fifty now, what was it? Or what is it currently and what's it going to, just be good to have it there.
That's absolutely, absolutely. Um, and then the, we go to Article twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, there's, there's currently, we're holding those as blank as we're negotiating those two. Um, so, uh, language will come into the document at a later date. And then there's the zoning articles, uh, which were provided by, um, the, the Planning Board Chair and which have been reviewed by KP. Those are some of the technical ones, we wanted to make sure we had their eye on early. Um, so those have been reviewed by KP.
So these are all good, Kevin, this is the final version for them?
Yeah, as long as the Planning Board's comfortable with the language, it, this has been proofed by KP. So if there's any questions, we still have plenty of time, um, between now and, um, you know, the month or so from now when the, the Planning Board likes to finalize everything. But if there are questions, we certainly have time to, to change the language or, or modify as needed. But this is, this is approved by KP at this point in time.
Okay, and the only thing I would say, just so that there's no confusion, there's no recommendation yet from the Planning Board about whether to approve or not approve the zoning change, um, from residential to commercial. So they still have to hold their public hearing and get input from the public. So I know it states here that it is recommended, but, uh, they have no decision yet.
Hundred percent, we always put as a placeholder a recommendation for positive action unless otherwise, um, in the draft forms. And, and there's times when we put recommended no action, like the trees last year towards.
Or TBD, just until it comes through.
Yep. Um, so if you, if we move up to the Mascanomic, um, Regional School District, that's Article, currently Article fortieth, that will change. Um, right now, we're waiting and they've asked, I had an email this exchange this morning with Jeff Sands, the Finance, Finance Director for Mascanomic. Um, they don't have a language to provide us yet, but the intention is that similar to prior year, two years ago, when there was some cleanup la- uh, language. And then again, last year where there was some cleanup of the cleanup for one article or two. Um, they're looking to make some cleanup adjustments on the capital language as well. So that language will come at a future date that we'll plug in.
Kevin, quick question of.
Oh, absolutely, Mad Vice Chair, please.
Um, just on Article thirty-six, did KP recommend, are we putting in the entire amendment about the water? Um, the droughts and, you know, level one, two, three, is that all being embedded in here? Or is it an attachment? Because it says text of amendments, so that, there was a lot, I just didn't know if they made a recommendation.
So I'll have to ask, um, Matt, who worked on this. Um, he, I, full disclosure, received it just a little after four o'clock today and then made some modifications myself. So didn't have a chance to have the debrief call like we, we did plan, just in the essence of time. Uh, but that would be one I'll flag for a conversation when we do touch base.
Okay, thanks.
Kevin, when are we going to get sort of more specific detail around the school funding and their ask for overrides and, and their budget numbers?
So the schools, um, have given us a breakdown, right now they're at one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand and change. Um, over, and that would be their override above the two and a half percent growth that they've been, uh, allocated or recommended, or the guidance, I should say, that they receive from the Finance Committee. So that would, that's right now is a placeholder in Article three, that's the number as of right now. Um, I'm not sure if there's, through our conversations and their conversations with the FinCom, maybe in the school committee and administration, if that number will get, be tightened up or not. But as of today, that's, that's their number. Mascanomic, um, you'll notice under Article five, the eight million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, four seventy-seven. Um, that is, um, uh, two and a quarter percent of year-over-year plus the shift in allocation of point one-four percent, uh, that the town of Topsfield absorbs in, in additional costs. Um, so that would be the by guideline dollar amount. Now there's a blank below that you can see that's highlighted in yellow. That's where any, the additional number. I have spoken with, uh, members of the Masco School Committee earlier today as well. Um, and they have a meeting tonight and there is some indication, I haven't put a number in there quite yet of what the override is because I know that they're working on a couple of things to hopefully bring that number down. But right now, assume a six hundred thousand dollar number, um, for the override at Masco. Um, but I, I do, I have, I have some, I feel confident that number's going to go down, I don't know by how much. Um, but I will note too that the Mascanomic override is much different than the elementary school override in that if Mascanomic fails in Topsfield but passes in the other two communities, we now still have to allocate those funds that override is by default, has been successful and for that, for Masco. Um, and we'll have to make, come back on the town side to figure out a way to come up with whatever those dollars look like. So, um, whereas the elementary school, it's a little different in that they would, because it's not a regional, it's in essence, to some degree, some consider, and Dr. Morrison says it's the Department of the Town. If their department fails to, to obtain the funding they need for their budget, they will need to go back to their budget and fi- figure out a means of how to achieve a balance.
Right, so, so the element, the elementary schools are six hundred thousand over?
One point one seven zero eight nine six at this very moment.
One point seven is just the.
One point one seven.
It's one point two million.
Yeah, basically the elementary schools are trending at about a one point two million dollar.
And Masco is about a six hundred, but I did not place that number in there because of the conversation I had earlier today. I didn't feel comfortable putting that in because I do feel like there's some potential movement in the right, in the down direction. Um, more than, I think on the, what I've heard from the elementary school to date. So, um, that was a judgment call, but that's kind of the, the thought process behind this too.
And I just want to reiterate this one point, eh, eh, without discussing whether or not we support an override or not, it doesn't, is not the point I'm about to make. But it'll be incumbent upon somebody, probably us, to educate people on the difference between an elementary override and a Masco override. Because just to say again what Kevin said, but in perhaps even simpler terms, uh, and maybe even overly simplified terms. Uh, if the elementary goes for an override and it fails, those cuts will either entirely or mostly come from the elementary's budget, right? It's a self-contained thing, they'll have to make those cuts. If Masco comes in for an override, we do not vote for it in Topsfield, but the other two towns do. We still have to pay for it, but now we cannot take that money from the taxpayer because the override failed inside Topsfield. So we are left with no choice but to take it out of the town budget, which at whatever number you could be talking about laying off policemen or firemen or people inside town, wherever it's going to come from, it's got to come from the town. And so, and again, I say that not indicating support for one or the other, but just people need to know the outcome of what a negative vote does in those two scenarios.
But even saying it like that, almost, you know, it's a little, I don't know, the, the messaging needs to be worked on because even hearing it like that, be concerned.
Well, yeah, and, and it, but it's, it is to me a legitimate concern, right? Because we, we've created a town budget, the town has. And if the Masco override fails, but we still need to write a, again, whatever that number is, six hundred thousand dollar check to, to Masco, it's got to come out of somewhere and the only place left is the town's budget.
Um, just to Raphael's point, I, we do want to present it in a light that's not threatening. Um, i- if we vote against it and another town votes against it, everyone's fine.
No, this is true.
We don't want to say to them, you have to vote for this, um, because otherwise we're going to lay off personnel, you know?
And I understand, and in this conver, this is a work session, so we're having a conversation. Um, but, you know, I think more often than not, at least in my exceedingly short time here in town, I've only looked at elementary overrides and it's a much simpler kind of process in the elementary override. It either goes through, it doesn't, the school gets their money or it doesn't, right? The Masco one's a different animal altogether. And by the way, further complicating it is we go first. So we have no idea what other towns have done.
I think, I think that's better. Can, can I ask again? Go ahead, boy.
Nope.
Sorry, Kim.
Nope, good.
On the flip, the flip side, if we vote for it, it's in our budget, the other two towns vote again? What happens then?
Yep.
It doesn't go forward, right?
Yeah, Mascanomic will need to cut those funds to balance their budget because they will not have the, they need two-thirds approval.
So I know, the town has allocated that money.
No.
To the money that the town, or, no?
No, we haven't allocated it. No, we're vo- voicing whether or not we would agree to tax our people to raise that money. So if two of the towns don't vote for it, then Masco doesn't get that money. We don't have to pay anything.
So it just.
Our whole town appropriation goes down.
Just the override.
Yeah.
The override for the Masco goes down.
Basically, i- in the simplest terms, it's getting permission to take that money out of taxes. If there is no place to then send that money, if the override fails in the other two towns, then we never take that money to send it over.
It's like it never happened and Masco just has to make sure that their budget now is six hundred thousand less than what they were hoping for. They have to find it, a, a way out. And can I ask what the process is? Because for the elementaries, as we said, it's very clear cut. They have to then go and find if their override doesn't pass, they have to take the one point two million out of their budget. What is the process for finding six hundred thousand out of all budgets? Who heads that effort? And does it come out of the elementary schools as well as the town?
So, uncharted waters to some extent. And we, as us collectively, as Select Board and, and myself, would probably be running point position with the Finance Committee as well to really figure out the right path forward, lay out what the options look like, and then decide, you know, with the, you know, Finance Committee providing advice, Select Board. Um, and myself, we would move forward to, to finding a way to balance. Because we, we don't have a choice on that, that part, we know, we know where we have to end up. It's just how we get there would be, there's no definition to that. It, it would be a little bit of, um, uncharted waters, like I said.
We, we may need some legal help on this one because once, let's say the elementary school budget is voted in, the elementary schools have complete control over their budget. Um, and so we cannot tell them how to spend their money once it's, once they have their budget. So are we allowed to go back and say to them, I know the town voted to give you your one point two million override and whatever your budget is, but now you have to come up with fifty percent of that six hundred thousand that we have to give to Masco? Can we do that or can we not legally?
So legally, we can ask any question we want.
Um, I mean, legally, do they have to participate?
Legally, they, legally, and they've, we've had these conversations the last couple of years. Two years ago, we had a hundred and sixty thousand dollar shortfall and the school came up with ninety thousand to balance below the guideline. Um, and then we came up with the seventy on the town side. Last year, um, we looked for, I think, around twenty or twenty-five thousand in this, in the schools, um.
But that was before town meeting, that was discussions before we went to town meeting. If we go to town meeting and the town votes to give the elementary schools the money they asked for, and then they, they, um, I mean, maybe the vote happens the other way around, I don't know. But say they, they get the vote from the town to get them all the money they want, and then the Masco one fails. Now that the vote has already occurred, can you go back to the school committee and say, you guys have to, you know, work with us and, and come up with half of it? It's a little different animal after the vote takes place than when you're talking before you go to town meeting.
And I, I think, yes, at the end of the day, Article three is an appropriation for bottom line number that includes the elementary schools. It doesn't carve out the elementary schools unless it's the school override component of it. So I think that, that this, that's where it's sort of like this di- interesting dynamic, it's something of an academic exercise that we could go through ahead of time, obviously, but then if it hap- if it happens that way, the practical exercise, but, um.
And probably a legal one, I think we should know where we stand before going into it.
There is also the option, as long as we're talking about this thing where the other two towns pass it and Topsfield doesn't. There is the option to basically then hold a special town meeting and ask again and say, hey, you said no before, but now here's the new reality, are you going to say no again? And at that point, we could speak concretely to what may or may not happen.
Yeah, so good to know legally what all our options are, uh, before going into this.
Could someone please clarify for me of this one point two million dollars that the schools are looking for? Are the elementary schools and Masco, are they trending up in student enrollment? Are they tr- are they flat, are they trending down?
Masco, Masco's lost about six hundred students, five or six hundred students in the last decade.
So my understanding was in the last ten years, yes, that they've been, they've been going down. So they're going down and they're looking for one point two million dollars at a high.
Well, that was Masco, I, I don't know for the elementary school, just.
Elementary's been going down too.
Yeah, okay, so we're, so we have less kids, so fewer teacher requirements, I assume that means, what is the one point two, and Kevin, I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm not trying to bait the merits or, or any, I'm just trying to gather information. What, what is in general the one point two for with less kids?
The one point, um, it, so the number of the override is one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, eight ninety-six, so we're calling it one-two. The, at the last Finance Committee meeting, um, was it last night? Two nights ago.
Two nights ago, two nights.
I can't keep track, so it's two nights ago. And, um, they provided, um, what they refer to as the bandage sheet. And, but they provided was the path to balancing their budget or what they would reduce out of their budget if the, um, if the override's not successful. And so they have nine items, they said this is an idea, there could be some changes, it's not hard and fast, that this is exactly what they would do to get to that point of um, balancing their budget if the override fails. But they gave at least some ideas of what that would look like. It includes transportation, it would include the, the kindergarten fee, which they re- has been reduced in the last year, um, down to zero, back into thirty-four hundred dollars, um, per student. Um, operations supervisor, it's a facilities person that the three communities would split to help, uh, with the facilities team at the school's position would probably not happen. That's a new position they're looking for this year. Um, tech, technology is something they're looking to build into their operating budget and technology is something that they funded through what they refer, referred to as tailings. And technology is something that they funded through what they refer, referred to as tailings. Uh, it's really what would be free cash if it comes back to the town, but, um, they use it to purchase their technology at the end of the year for the fall, for the next year. Um, they've identified that they're looking for an actual line item in the budget. Uh, so that's, that it's guaranteed that it's there, uh, year over year. That would probably come off. Um, we talked about crossing guards, limiting new crossing guards. Um, and then direct educational support and services, um, which was a pretty good chunk of the, of, of, of money on that one. Um, education coordinator, integration, special education support, um, for the special education students in the district. Uh, enrichment programs, um. Those are some examples of what they laid out as places, professional development was another one, reduction of.
To be clear, that's the bandage sheet. What we don't have is what caused all these cuts? What has grown by so much? That, that's the side of the equation we're completely missing. That's how they're gonna fix the problem.
It, while it may not be exactly the same, couldn't you take that bandage sheet and flip it around and say, these are the things that we.
They're adding. Yeah, they're adding people. They'll, these are not cuts. This is, they want to add more people and if we don't give them the one point two million, then they can't add these people and these are the people they won't add.
Well, some of it, some of it's people like computer technology and the.
Is a hundred thousand. It's a hundred thousand out of the one point two million.
Yeah.
So it's mainly people. They're adding people.
And I think that's what we were gonna discuss with the working session with the elementary school, right?
That's, and we're planning to have a, um, we're trying to schedule a time that works for everybody.
Apologies, sorry.
No worries, no worries, Mr. McDonald. Um, but we're, we're trying to do that in the next couple of weeks so that it doesn't get too far into their budget season and. There's an opportunity for the select board to talk about their budget in more detail. And also the strategy that they're taking and the impact, you know, making sure everybody's eyes wide open and what they're looking to do, but. It is an opportunity for the select board who ultimately owns the warrant and what goes on to the warrant articles to, to have a frank conversation hopefully, so. Um.
And that has not been, we have not agreed to a date, is that right?
Um, I know that there was a date that the schools proposed to us. I know that we circulated that. It wasn't available for everybody, so. We are waiting for a second date that we can.
Just, um, before going into the meeting, Kevin, um. It kind of like Marshall said, you know, flipping that around, these are the things that they'd have to take out of the budget that they just created. So my question would be with, to Cam's point, with enrollment going down. Why is it that we need to add, I don't know, whatever new positions? Um, why are we going up in the number of staff? Um, what's driving that? Um, with fewer kids, um, and a lot more computerized learning, which we thought was going to be freeing up. Teachers to do more like project oriented and hands-on and it seems like a lot of kids are working in the computers and we're still going up in, in staff. There may be a good reason for that, but I think that would be the question most people would ask.
Yeah, what I would, I, I think would be really helpful for a productive conversation and. Mr. Chairman, I had this conversation not too long ago was, once we have that date. Um, ask that the select board if there's specific questions that you might have, um, that you wanna have specific answers for that meeting. You can share it with me and I'll make sure that Dr. Morrison, the team have it ahead of, ahead of the meeting so that they're prepared to, to answer them and. When they do come in to make the meeting as productive as possible, so. Um, we'll, we'll get.
We don't, we don't wanna go into there and be like, well, this is a question and they say, well, we'll get you that answer because then we can have a discussion about.
Right. One thing that would be helpful is that bandage sheet. Take a look at that. If those are what's adding up to the one point two million.
And any breakdown in their budget. Like, cause all we get is that line item.
I, um, I can circulate this as well with the master plan information tomorrow or tonight if the board would like a copy that was.
Yes, please.
I, I, I was just gonna ask if you felt comfortable giving us a copy of that bandage sheet.
Well, I mean, they shared it in a public meeting, so.
Yeah.
It's.
I'd like to see it.
And, and one thing I mentioned to Kevin too is just, I, I'd love to see how the budget has grown since right before COVID. And each of those COVID years, what the budget was and how much they're getting on top of that from COVID funds. Because it seems perhaps, and I may be wrong, but it seems like that's kind of been baked into the budget a little bit. Um, and the assumption is we'd keep funding that even though it was one-time funds, so.
No, that definitely happened. I mean, they've been open about that, that they've over, over COVID, I'll call it. You know, the past two, three years, whatever it is, that they used one-time funds to. Fund ongoing costs. They're not hiding from doing that, but that is now the argument that these are. Not new things, but pre-existing things, but they're pre-existing things that they funded with, with basically grant money, so.
Right, and that weren't approved, you know, by town or town meeting, you know, um, so.
They effectively gave themselves an override is what they did.
But the, and, and I think that's the big thing is level funded compared to last year. It is not necessarily the same thing as level funded compared to pre-COVID.
Yes.
Right.
I think, um, Ms. Gabriel, our town accountant is.
Catherine's fine. Um, just one thing, I just wanted to add from, from Monday night's meeting. Um, so it was back in two thousand nineteen, boys, you probably remember this. Where they had, they were coming in, I wanna say with the one point two million dollar override. Based on the bandage sheet, the Board of Selectmen decided they placed five hundred and ninety-three thousand on, on the ballot for an override. It did pass. Um, one of the things that they brought up the other night is that basically the remainder of that money they've been carrying in their budget. So it's kind of philosophical in terms of that, you know, they were only given five ninety-three, so maybe the budget should have been cut at that time by the, the other. Six hundred thousand. So they feel like they're starting, at their starting point is that they're already behind by six hundred thousand because they didn't get an override. Question back in two thousand nineteen.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine.
That's a philosophy, certainly.
That's a good piece of information, Catherine. Thank you.
Well, at the time when the discussions were held, the select board did not find that those things were as critical as the school had found them. Like free kindergarten, for instance, and I know you can debate that, but there was a lot of discussion about that. It wasn't just, we gave.
That's right.
Half, you know, there was a lot of in-depth discussion about what additional expenses were that they wanted to add in and have the town pay for.
I'm not too sure, I, I'm not too sure that I agree with the philosophy that they asked for one point two and we gave them six. And there's still six hundred thousand sitting out there that they're owed, okay?
Get it back.
I don't agree with that philosophy.
Yeah, well, and, and I think. And again, I, I'm, I say this not trying to be supportive or not, but just informationally how they talk about it. Um, or what I've heard them say. I don't wanna speak for them, but in multiple public meetings, I've heard them basically say. We wanted one point two, then we agreed with the select board that we would ask for that over two years, right? So they asked for the first one, the first year, and then COVID happened, so they never. Quote-unquote got to ask for the second one because of the new reality we were living in. And that's when I, when I use the phrase, they gave themselves that second override. They basically funded that. Second override that never got voted on, never got put on the ballot through one-time funds, so.
That's good input, Marshall. Thank you.
And one thing too, I'll, I'll mention is that I'm working very closely with the town administrators in the other two communities. Um, and I know that, uh, Mr. Hook and myself, we had a conversation with the Chair of the Boxford Select Board as well recently. Um, trying to make sure with all the different numbers that are coming in from the two schools. That there's at least an understanding of the, the path that each community is gonna take. Are they going for the override? Are they, are they gonna try to bake it, build it into their operational budget with the existing levies that they might have? And I'll say generally, I think everybody's aligned in, in most cases. There's a couple of things we're trying to. Iron out and make sure we have an understanding of the direction for the different communities, but. We've been pretty consistent, um, with sort of our position, which is the position that the FinCom Chair, our, our FinCom Chair has taken in, in the position we've taken, which is. There's three buckets. You have, this is your guidelines. If you exceed that, that's, that's where the override is. You can't find a way to balance it. Um, and I think the other communities are, like I said, because of the good communication relationships we have. I think we were able to have some really candid and, and positive conversations around how we can work collectively consistently. Cause there is, there's value to that, especially the Mascanomic, right? Um, knowing how their override would work, so. In addition to that, the next article, um, is the turf field for Mascanomic. Um, if, if it's okay to, to bring that up, I don't wanna cut the conversation short, but I know that this.
Well, I, I. Plenty of time to do more of this next.
Which number is it, Kevin?
Forty-first?
Forty-first?
This is currently the, uh.
Forty.
Forty, it's the one after the fortieth. It's, I, I just spoke and I think before we talked about the override about the.
Oh, I see it.
Forty-first is the historical commission.
Yeah, it doesn't have. Go ahead.
It's, it's unarticled at the moment, um.
Oh.
So an article number will be assigned to it once everything flushes out. There's a, there's a couple of places where we have. A blank and a couple of places where we have it because there's still some movement in how we're gonna put what in and what might not be. Um, but the, the Mascanomic, uh, School District Turf Fields, so one of the items that was in their budget proposal was the. Design and permitting and feasibility study for turf fields of, uh, sports facility. Complex at the Mascanomic, um, property, Mascanomic Box for their property. Um, it's something that they wanted to include. Um, right now, all three communities are looking to pull it out and have a single free cash allocation. Um, article that the town can vote as a whole up or down, whether they support that, the funding of that. Again, with a two-thirds vote, uh, moving that forward or not. Um, so I'm having, I talked to Dr. Um, Harvey earlier today. We're gonna try to get a meeting with him, myself and the town administrators next week or the week after, to really kind of go through the details. But we have been communicating with this, the school committees about the approach with the free cash allocation for the turf fields versus having it as part of the. Base budget and the override. Um, so that, that's what that article represents at this time, so.
Can a turf field be in an expense budget? That's like capital expenditure, isn't it?
Yeah, so what they put in there, they don't have a capital line item per se. What they have is a debt line, so they put it under debt. Meaning that they were proposing that the communities, which we would have to have an article for that anyways, to take out debt, to fund it. Um, we're doing really well with free cash. We've talked about that. We've targeted around an eight percent free cash to budget and we're hitting that. And, um, Mr. Guido, John Guido of the Finance Committee brought it up Monday night, said of all the triple A rated. Communities in Massachusetts, all but two have a higher percentage than eight percent. So, but we're doing really well. That's one of the things the Finance Committee talks about is that we have a lot of free cash, um, but I think we have the right amount of free cash. But we have enough where we could potentially fund something just like this Madvice Chair without, um, taking out debt or something like that because of the position we put ourselves in, which is great.
Is there a proposal or presentation on this turf field? I don't know much about it.
They will need to be if it's an article in the warrant, obviously, and I think as the board controls it, I don't think it's, it's. It's not, I think it's very appropriate to ask for just that at a certain point as we go, before we finalize the articles. Um, to include.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, if we don't know anything about it, I think we'd be hard pressed to say we're supporting an article to go into the warrant.
I, I went, they had a presentation about a month ago. I think they have them pretty regularly. Um, but I went and they went through a lot of it in detail. It seemed like most of the people at the meeting were basically those involved. Uh, so not a whole lot of public involvement, but their, their bigger thing is was strategizing about how to get this funded for the. The, um, the, the analysis, this initial thing. Cause they were saying the build is closer to eight, eight or nine million dollars is their current guess. But then they, they wanted to roll that into a larger capital expenditure. Which requires all three towns to approve and that was on the order of forty million.
Which is the one thing I was gonna say, unlike the Masco budget, capital items for Masco require unanimous, otherwise they don't go through.
So the, the field is gonna cost nine million dollars to build and what is it that they're looking to put in here? Is it like some design or initial?
Design, yeah.
The initial design and permitting and feasibility, there's con-con components of it. There's, there's some upfront cost that, that will.
And, and what, what's that dollar value? What are we looking at?
I think it's a six hundred thousand dollar total and we're assuming a third right now is a placeholder of two hundred thousand.
Kevin, so at that meeting, they'd also talked about, uh, there, there are some fantastic fundraisers involved. They had talked about going out and getting some private funding too, but I don't see anything to that effect in the warrant. Have they scrapped that idea?
When I spoke with the member of the, of the school committee mask earlier today, that was part of the conversation. I think they're very early in that process. Um, I think with a nine or eight or nine million dollar ask in a year plus time. Um. I'd be curious to see if, if they decide to put their fundraising efforts towards the actual build, right? Let's, if you get this money.
Okay.
We'll build it versus, let's see at a smaller dollar amount, the town, towns will be able to pitch in a, the two hundred thousand. Minus to get us to the point where we can then go fundraise as well, the design, the imagery and the momentum to kind of keep it going.
Okay.
Raphael, do you know, is there a, like an online presentation that we could look at that talks about, like, what's the problem they're trying to solve? How many sports would be impacted? How many kids?
They did say it was all online. I got paper copies, but they, there, there is like, this whole group has a website. And they said they put the presentation online. I have not personally seen it online. Again, I had hard copies.
Kevin, is that something we could just find out?
Can they spread it around?
Yeah. So that we're not all searching.
Yeah, I have, um, I made a note on my, my, my posted here to underneath the. Remind, uh, Dr. Morrison for a date for the special meeting is to talk with the, without getting that presentation or having it potentially come to a meeting to do a presentation on turf field.
Yeah, cause if they got it, if they had a big campaign for the build, people might not have any problem, two hundred thousand out of free cash. Uh, you know, to help towards the design, but.
Yeah.
There's, there's gonna have to, there's gonna have to be some significant design. I've, I've got a picture from two thousand and maybe twelve. Of my son and two of his friends canoeing across the football field in about three and a half feet of water. And I'm pretty damn sure that any piece of rubber would float away if it was in fact flooded, so there's gonna have to be a lot of earth moved, berms built. Um, there, there's gonna be a lot of work done if it's gonna go in the same location where it is now.
Where is it going?
Yeah, the intent is to actually move it on the other side of the complex. My understanding, not the football field for that exact reason. It's that they know that it would not be something which would probably stand up the test of time if they built it. And then with the flooding and the conservation components associated with it, so.
That would be cool. Up there it would work. Uh, it would work up there. You're, you're, you're probably another eight feet above the river over there.
The, uh, website is turfupmasko.org.
And it's also avail- this domain is also available for two thousand seven.
No, 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 that's turfupmasko.com, turfupmasko.org, looking at right now.
You said dot org, right?
Dot org.
They need to change their Facebook page.
Okay.
They need to change their Facebook page.
So anyway, you can all check that out. I say good luck to those people trying to do that in the year of multiple overrides, but.
I was gonna say, put that in perspective, two hundred thousand of free cash, which is a six hundred thousand dollar override.
And before you talk about eight or nine billion dollars to build the field, so. Anyway.
Um, Marshall, if I might, I just, I wanna, I wanna, I have one question for Kevin. That relates back to Article Forty, which is the Mascanomic budget. Uh, I had one question and I, he alluded to that a little bit. You, you've been in contact and discussed Masco budget with those folks, um, several times. Uh, the question I've got for you is where do you think they feel that their override is gonna, gonna work out? In all three towns? Where, where, you get, have you got any feel for that?
I have a feeling that one town might absorb whatever cost Masco has into their operating budget, which means it's not gonna be an override. Um, which means then it's, if Topsfield votes it down, it then comes up to, um. The other community to vote it. In reach, yeah, but if we vote for it and then it's the same, you know, then it would happen if the other community builds it in their operating budget, so. Um, I think that that's just the, the, the mechanics of it. I think that I do have a sense that. The leadership understands, although they're not necessarily growing their operations, they're maintaining in a lot of ways. And the special education's driving a lot of the cost, that there is a big increase. And I think that there is, from what I've heard from multiple members of the, uh, school committees, that they are rolling up their sleeves. To try to find ways to bring that number down. Um, and I, like I said, I did have a conversation where I said, expect, be on an override and. You want the pass, just know you have other impacts, outside impacts, perspective. You want to pass, just know you have other impacts, outside impacts, perspective, elementary school. As one that could have an impact for people at the polls where it was a standalone, it might not seem as large if it's. Half that or whatever the number is, that's the override at Masco. You see, it it's really important we drive that number down so that it. If if it if it's gonna pass, it has a better chance of doing so.
Kevin, can you just clarify? Did you say one town is gonna absorb it in their budget so they won't have an override? It won't actually be out for a vote?
Yeah, I've had some off the record conversations with the other two communities and um. We we, one of the communities seems to be pivoting in the direction that they think they'll absorb the the additional cost.
If that happens, if let's say it's Middleton, because they have a lot of business, if they absorb it, for instance, and Boxford and Topsfield put it on. How does that work with only two towns voting? How do you get two thirds?
Middleton basically approves it themselves. So they're already in.
They approve it, but they don't have it on the warrant for any dollar?
Yeah, because they're they're, no, I mean, by their paying for it out of their budget. They're already, that's the equivalent of they don't need the override to pay for it, so they're already saying.
That becomes an approval by default, in my opinion.
Okay, if I could just clarify one thing, Kevin and I were working on the Masco numbers earlier today, but Kevin, I just um. Wanted to look, I looked at one of the things. So when with the budget that they've given us in their first version, the the. We're taking into consideration the guidelines and then we had also looked at the enrollment shift. So that leaves the what the over ask at this point is three hundred sixty five thousand seven hundred, so three hundred and sixty six thousand would be the override question.
Not six hundred?
Well, because we we had, we we added the guy, the guidelines in and we added the enrollment shift, so. I just wanted to just clarify that part of it. And then we're also taking out the, they're they're asking for, they're calling debt, the hundred and eighty four thousand or two hundred thousand is what we've been rounding it to. Um, but that would be a free free cash question. And then if that were to actually go forward, it would be a capital exclusion question for next year.
Okay, can you clarify that? Just really sink it down. What's the dollar amount that would be the override then for Masco?
Uh, three hundred sixty five thousand seven hundred.
Okay, that's significantly different than.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they're they're total over asked um of the budget is. If you look at the the document they sent you today is five hundred seventy five, four seventy five, and then. What Kevin and I were working on is the guideline was two point two five from the. Finance committee, but then also the enrollment shift, which was a point one four percent. So that's what, so that's the number that we put into the budget today. I just haven't been able to send this over to Kevin yet.
We got sent something today? You said Masco.
They sent the same thing. It's still dated January eighteenth. They just sent another version of it.
Did they send it to us?
So it's to Kevin, to me.
So um, yeah, so we, Catherine and I worked a lot of numbers. With the, uh, like I said earlier, I left that blank because we hadn't actually like tied that number down, but the number we were kind of discussing at a high level was six, but. Captain's point, the numbers, hopefully, it's already coming down.
Good work, Catherine.
It sounds like, I mean, the budget is like what they want to spend is the same, right? It's just that we're moving a little here and a little from there. We're redefining certain things.
Well, I don't think so, because we had two and a half. They had that that was worked into the omnibus, right? Because that was guideline.
So Masco, Masco's guy knows two and a quarter and. And the image goes two and a half. Um, and with. Yeah, so that that that. Six hundred, three hundred and seventy, whatever the number is or whatever that number lands, it's even less hopefully, right? Um, that's. After you take in consideration the proration of the student increase for Top Seal, although our numbers didn't go up. Others, other communities went down more, so our proration goes up by point one four percent. It also includes on top of that two and a quarter, right? So you take two and a quarter, then you add on top of that, what point one four percent equals. And that that eight point nine nine million dollars. Um, that I mentioned earlier, and then whatever above that that they're prorating. And that they like us to to provide to the to the um. To the regional school district. That extra beyond that two and a quarter and the proration becomes the override. In in this case, it sounds like it's three hundred and seventy.
In part of the reasoning that the the finance committee went to the two and a quarter. As opposed to, it's been higher, it's been three percent, it's been two point seven five. Um, was because to take into consideration the enrollment shift, because it's it's not just an enrollment shift, it's enrollment decrease on both for both schools. They were looking at that very closely last year. In this year.
Uh, also, uh. While we were sitting here, I forwarded to you all an email uh that I was copying on that the Masco School Committee and the former Melissa Ogden. Is sending to the governor and other uh regional leadership. Has to do with a rate and increase in what schools have to pay in the private special ed. I won't go and do it here, but. Uh, they asked that I forward that on, so now you all can look at that as well.
And it's 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 something that I know in the 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 new governor did stipulate that education is one of the priority. Um, places where she wants to. Put resources towards, so hopefully those the the state aid that's received at the schools can help offset some of these costs that we're. We're dealing with right now.
Do we find out that aid, Kevin, before we finalize the budget?
Um, I know it's it's dependent on her budget. I don't know where they are at the state right this minute. I don't, I can't remember if we have those typically hard and fast by the time we go to print or not, but.
Yeah, it it the it's been, it's been June and July at times as well.
Catherine, if we approve a certain amount and then the state comes through with additional funds. For Masco or elementary, do we get money back?
Uh, so I don't know that. Um, I I I know it's happened before. We have had an assessment and then the assessment, the actual assessment came in lower. Than what was voted um one year, but I I don't know if they have to do that or if they just chose to do that, but. Usually, I mean, like when we're doing the town's budget, the the cherry sheet is what that's called, and then chapter seventy is part of that. Um, not for Masco, Masco gets their own chapter seventy, but we we base our numbers on last year. We just, we don't even do anything with it. We just use last year's numbers. Right through the whole budget process, because chapter seventy is such a big number for Masco, they're trying to get a closer. A closer look at it, and by doing that, they're paying close attention to what's going on with the with legislation, you know, to do the budget.
But whatever they get, um, even if it's over what they expected, they keep it.
I so like I said, I don't know that. Um, we have had, there was a year that um what was voted. Would the, we actually didn't use the full assessment. It just went down into free cash. It stayed in the budget, went into free cash. I don't know if that was as a result of chapter seventy, but I would suspect that that was. I'd had to look to see.
So, um. The next article, just to talk about again, is is by way of update, there's um. An article in here, it's labeled forty fourth at the moment, that's. Last year, we put money towards the cemetery improvements using cemetery specific funds. Um, we can't transfer that money to buy um. A police cruiser or an ambulance because it's cemetery specific, because after this, these capital improvements that we're making up there. Um, finished, there's not really a project necessarily on the horizon that we would reallocate those funds to put towards, so. We use ARPA money and we will finish using ARPA money to cover the cost of these projects. We talked about this with ARPA, we're self. Items that have been voted at town meeting that are eligible. In prior years, we're looking to use those, the ARPA money and taking that free cash and being able to return it. This is a similar situation, Natalie, it's not free cash, it's cemetery monies. So we need to have a re, an article that rescinds the vote last year to use those funds for that purpose, because we're using the ARPA money. So it's it's just a technical, it's a mechanical article, but um just wanted you to. Hear that as you're looking at it and understanding what that that particular one means.
Kevin, before we return that money, is there anything else that we could use that for? I mean, instead of using ARPA money, if we had this sitting there?
So. We don't, I mean, the only thing I could think of, and I'm not recommending this, would be to improve the um, the chapel. But, yeah.
No, but there's nothing else that we've approved that we're using ARPA funds for that the cemetery fund could cover?
Not in cemetery, because a lot, we we outsourced a lot of the the work and we we did the water line, which was really, we did the expansion, which was really important, and now. Um, we're looking at the final phase of of paving it in this, in in the coming months, which is super exciting. Um, I think a lot of people are gonna be very happy with that that project when it's complete.
And we don't need this money for that paving?
No, we're gonna use the ARPA money to cover that cost.
Why would we not use this? And use the ARPA for something else that it has a much wider range of possible options?
Yeah, so there was, it was the ARPA group. Came to the conclusion that there was. If it was an eligible capital item that had already been approved by the townspeople. If the the group felt that. It almost had a stamp of approval that that we should use those funds in that way. Free up the free cash and then have future capital items using the free cash that can go to the people to vote.
But um, i- if this money is sitting there and now we're gonna put it back into the fund, it was already approved to be used for. Cemetery things like, you know, the zero turn mower or something, instead of using the ARPA money.
E- early on in the ARPA process, this was um on the on the one of the, the initial list that David Larson brought to the board, the the select board. Um, in terms of using money that was otherwise voted for free cash or other capital. So this was on on that list that he presented and approved by, well, not approved, but um, supported by the select board as well.
Well, I understand the theory, but. I didn't know we had a hundred and sixty thousand already approved sitting there that could have covered some of the cemetery items instead of using. This was already approved by town meeting, right? Just like the.
Yes, yeah.
Capital items were approved, both were approved. But this one, we're just gonna give back and instead just kind of. Drain down the ARPA?
It's it, I am, I'll say my, from where I'm sitting in my position on it, um, I fully support the ARPA group. We've done, I think the groups. The way the process is working is working extremely well. Um, if the. Select board, because this isn't as clean as the free cash ones that we talked about in the past, right? Like the pickup truck, the dump truck, the zero turn mower. Because of cemetery funds, if the board has any. Questions or would like us to reconsider it. It like we talked about, this is the the select board's warrant. If it's, if we'd like to reconsider using these funds. Out of the allocated out of the last article last year versus our book, we certainly get out of that conversation. We have time to, right? Because, you know, this isn't.
I don't think we're revisiting this. This is the first time I even knew we had this money sitting there and that that was a potential pool. I knew that we had paid for capital items or we had them approved. And we could have pulled them from free cash and we talked about using ARPA instead, but this is like an entirely new pool. And this is the first time we've, well, at least the first time I can remember seeing it, that we have that pool of money sitting there.
Well, I mean, it was approved to town meeting.
Yeah, but that we haven't used it and that we're giving it back as opposed to using it for other cemetery items?
Yeah, we we, it's it's Catherine, it was Gabriel allude to earlier, we we at a. Point months ago, at some time since now, I know that we lit, had a list of the approved capital items.
I understand that, yeah.
That we went through. It it it's, this is though, to your point, Miss Madam Vice Chair, it is a little bit different in that cemetery funds, not free cash.
Yeah, it is an entirely different pool, so we don't have to go in depth here because I, this is the first time that we've seen it, but. I just don't know if there are other things, instead of using the ARPA money, that this is yet another pool, instead of using free cash. Or ARPA that we would consider. Now, we might not have anything that qualifies. But I think it'd be worth looking at.
Yeah, no, the, and I mean, the article money can sit there and be transferred at any point. It doesn't have to get returned necessarily. We could kind of wait and see what we want to do as well. The the only thing I can think of is with the cemetery that we have is is the engineering study to kind of lay out the expansion, but I know that. I think we're already, we already have that under contract and I believe that's being funded. Already out of cemetery funds that are non-restrictive to a town vote, so we're we're using those to to pay for the the engineering study through that. So I. We we could do, I mean, it's. We could certainly just, we could always pull it and just kind of continue down the path that we have, and then if we want to pivot, be able to pivot anytime, reclass if we class. If we take these expenses and we classify it to ARPA and then decide we want to use cemetery funds, we certainly could do that too. Um, but if we return the money, we can't. So if we wanted to have that flexibility in the future, we could certainly. Take it off and maybe it's an article next year, we have some better clarity then. Um, totally open, whatever the board's desire on this will follow suit. Um, this is, this is one that's just kind of a mechanical one, but certainly has some limitations if we put it back.
Okay.
Um, citizens petition, so that's the next one. Um, we did.
Can I ask you just one question before we go to that one? Just back to the historical fund, and this might be a Catherine question. Um, is it usually that we put a cap of three thousand on revolving funds? I just didn't know where that number came from.
Uh, it, the the number is determined based on having a conversation with what the expense is gonna be. It doesn't sound like, I think the max that she had was twenty five hundred. We just left a little bit of leeway. She's not gonna be, this isn't gonna be a high volume account by any means. It's probably gonna be short-lived, but this is really the only way. To accept funds, pay pay for an expense and, you know, without, you know, run it through the town's money.
Yeah, or if you had a discussion with Liz and she's comfortable with that dollar amount, I just didn't know where it came from.
She had, at a hundred dollars a sign, she had twenty four signs of people over the last ten years, whatever the program sort of. So she, and it's probably gonna be a one year kind of push, and then it'll be one or two or three, maybe a year at most, and that's three hundred dollars. Annually, if you if you look at that way.
And either way, this is an account that you can never run into the red, so if she only brings in two hundred dollars on the first year, she can only spend two hundred dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, citizens petition, so we received a citizens petition draft last week um from a resident here in Topsfield. Around a non-binding um. Warrant article that. Basically asked the town, the community, the town, if they're interested in the event that the existing. Developer does not fulfill their obligation in the option to purchase the land. That the town then consider, doesn't say we're bound to, but consider purchasing it for our own purposes. Um, and so the language as you see is is. Exactly how it was presented, so some of the capitalization and non-capitalization is is. How it was presented, so uh, we can't tweak the language on this one in any way. Um, you'll notice I did just put recommended as a placeholder, because it's, the FinCon does get to make a recommendation on this. Um, up or down, if it's something they want to support, um, action on it. Um, but again, emphasis on the non-binding, it's not something that will hold top uh us, the leadership of the community to to taking action. But it's something that'll, I obviously have some. Insight in what the larger community is thinking of um, purchasing land.
Kevin, does a citizen petition require a certain amount of? Citizens to support it? Can it be one person?
Ten.
I was gonna say, I think the number is ten. I believe it is ten.
Ten, ten signatures to get onto the warrant, and then a town meeting, it's uh, I think it's a majority vote if you support it or not support it.
It it's ten for the annual town meeting and I think two hundred for the special, if it was a special town meeting.
It'll be interesting because with the restrictive language on item two, it um. Some people may say, yeah, I'd like to buy it, but I I don't want to be restricted just to recreational or athletic. Um, there might be better options, so I'll be curious to see how. This one would come out.
A li- a little bit of, I mean, Kevin, I I I know we sort of discussed this a little bit. My my guess is you've you've had similar conversations, but. Um, what is the state of athletic fields in Topsfield right now in terms of? Being at max usage and do we need more? What what do we, what do we got?
So um, we've, we, we give you a little bit, so simple answer is I have a call out to the T A president, Topsfield Association president. Had a conversation with Stephanie, um, Sweeney, our rec director. I had conversations with the T A president. Probably a year ago, uh, when this conversation, someone, the same person who out, who put the citizens petition together and brought up the opportunity of purchasing the land and. I had a conversation around the need. Um, right now. We're, my understanding is we're doing generally pretty well. There was not a need, right? We weren't in a place where we were we're at capacity per se. I mean, the response I generally get from anybody who's in the, you know, if it's not, if it, the question just posed, do you want another field? With no strings attached, like, they're like, sure. Like, we did a survey where we asked what people would want it. I had Stephanie Sweeney scrub it a year and a half ago, she put it out or a year ago. I had her scrub it yesterday and I think of the hundred and eighty something respondents, like four respondents referenced Emerson Field. Um, one, I, it, one said we'd really like to have that for open space. Um, a couple of people said it looks terrible, which isn't our responsibility because we don't have rights to it, right? But it was overgrown, started to overgrow. But it was overgrown, started to overgrow. People said it looked pretty bad and, um. I think one person talked about stopping the development projects by, by purchasing it. Might have been the same person on.
I will just say that, uh, from my time on Park and Cemetery, when the town still had its whatever, one penny lease on. Use of Emerson Field. At that point. The amount of money that was put into maintenance. Far exceeded what they were making, since I think the only people using the fields were the TAA adult softball. And, you know, our fields have improved and grown since then, so.
It seems like, um, now I've, I've been here for thirty years, so it's ebbed and flowed. I mean, at one point, they were in, in. Strong use. My boys played baseball and they were just team after team there and T-ball and, and. And then it, there was a period of time, probably about. Four years ago, when it kind of ebbed then, and we didn't have as much of a need and that's why we pulled out of the lease. We said we actually have enough with the other fields. Why continue to do the maintenance? As Marshall said, you know, that's expensive. Um, I'm hearing now though that some of the other fields. Um, it needs some work. I mean, as Gary has said, and that we could use additional space. So I think we're going back to maybe needing some additional. Um, but I think it kind of goes like this.
Can, can I ask on that though? Needing additional fields versus needing TLC at the existing fields, those, those are two distinct things to me. You're, you're hearing that we need. Additional fields as well?
Because the existing fields are, are in not good shape and, and getting worse.
Well, I mean, they've been fallow for, God, four years, five.
Yeah, as much as Gary is trying, there's some sinkage that's going on in some fields that makes it undulating, which is. Tough to play on with, you know, potential sprained ankles and such. So I think it's the condition of the fields right now. That I'm hearing from one person deeply involved in this.
I don't know that, I mean, we're not, there's no reason for us to debate this, but I just, Emerson fields aren't in great shape either.
No, but to the question of is there a need for a field, the people in sports think that our fields have some difficulties. And so they would be looking for fields that did not have as. Many problems or were just some, you know, other options, you know, while the other ones are being worked on, so, yeah.
So since it's non-contingent, Kevin, um, you know, we're not talking about. Monies, we're not talking about, you know, anything that's specific. Um. Uh, how, how do you see this playing out? You know, if, if, if it gets, looks like it's on, it looks like they, they've got their signatures to get on, you know, on it. Um, but there's no specific requirement or ask. It's just sort of a big picture thinking, hey, if we needed more fields or a solar panel or whatever. Solar, solar farm, whatever. Coming right on the heels of an ask of one point two million dollars, it sounds like it's, you know, people in this town might get the idea that, uh, we're pretty well capitalized. And, you know, there's, there's money around. I. I don't know that. They're going to vote for it, but I mean, it deserves to be on if it's got the positions, you know?
Well, we don't actually, I'm sorry, that was a question for Kevin. Go ahead.
I don't mean us voting. I don't, I don't mean.
I, I was just gonna say, we don't have a choice. It's on, so.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I follow it.
Yeah, so the, the, the price of the property, I think right now is one-six is what the option's under.
It's lower.
You set down to one, two roughly. I think that. The reality of the situation is it's. It's probably unlikely that the property becomes available anyway, right? So that's kind of a hypothetical. Second, if it, if it. If it were to become available, the question is, you know, sure, the you, the, the need's important, but. Financially, right to your point, Mr. Brown, is can we afford this? You've got an override. We have two overrides, we got turf fields. Can we, can we afford this? And I think the, we did an analysis a year ago, what the debt structure at the interest rates a year ago would look like. And I think it was somewhere between a hundred and thirty or a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. Um, to put debt on this to purchase it at one-six, at the number it was at. And so. From a financial standpoint, if we're adding that into it, that would be. Basically what would be added into our operating budget to have to come up with annually. Um, and. I didn't say it yet, but Catherine and I spent quite a bit of time today. Looking at the budget and balancing it, right? Um, and we do this every year and we're doing it again this year and it's, it's, we're cutting fifty dollars here and a hundred dollars there. Literally, literally, not even figuratively, literally to, to try to balance. Um. So to take on that obligation is, is, it's real. Um, and we just, if it becomes available. The question would be. Do we want to do an override to buy the? Debt override to, to basically, um, buy the field, um, which is perfectly. Perfect option for people to take on if they choose. I think to your other question, Mr. Brown, of how the meeting's going to play out. The original draft that I saw a week and a half ago. It had, it has two points to this, to this existing document, one about Emerson Field property. And what it is, um, and two, what it would be used for. There was a third component to it of how we would buy it and, um, and such. I, I did have, because it was, the, the author of this did. Authorize me to check with KP just to have them do a once-over. KP recommended taking that component of the language out only because. We can't be bound by an unknown number without appraisal that being done, et cetera. And, you know, just as, as. Signing good, working in good faith with the, the person who was, who was putting this forward, um, and, and. That component of it was something that was problematic, but I think if that was still in here and it had a number to it, it might be a little. Excuse me, am I losing language? Scarier for people, right? It's another million two, or whatever the number is. I think it's more likely to have support because it's non-binding. And the cost isn't necessarily right there in your face to say, oh, my gosh, another giant number. So. I think this probably passes. If I found it topsy, when a neighbor has a concern. And they raise their hand, other neighbors seem to rally behind them, and that's a great thing. And I can see that being the case at town meeting.
I, my, my thought on this cam, a- as far as where it might go is how it's presented. Because, um, in the past, when we purchased some land. Um, and made it conservation, Green Belt paid for a big chunk of it, then they got a grant. So the amount was miniscule that the, the town had to carry. So I think the first question people ask is, well, how much is it? You know, that'll come up.
Absolutely.
And then how would we pay for it? And at that point, it's like, you know, right now, I think this is just getting a sense of how much. Loss are you going to feel? How, how wedded are you to that piece of property that we could have discussions? Um, because it could be a grant, it could be Essex Green Belt, it could be fundraising, it could be a variety of things. Um, but if overwhelmingly people say, we'd like to at least have the discussion, well, that's interesting to know. And if people are like, yeah, I'm okay. You know, I'm going on with my life. It's like, well, that's interesting to know as well. The, the church, I think, was a little concerned with this one and I, I said. To one person, um, you know, if this comes out really strong, it just could put you in a better negotiating position. Because it means you potentially have another buyer if for some reason things go awry. So don't be frightened by this at all. It's just, it, it's showing that. You might have another option, but.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, big picture, I sort of worry about having things at town meeting that aren't fully baked in terms of. Here's how we pay for it. Here's how the grants would line up. And it, it, I mean, I, I understand that's not going to be the case for this one. I really do. Um, I'm just, you know, I, I know how hard people are working, Catherine and Kevin, to balance the budget right now and. Anything that, you know, feels at all like a lack of fiduciary responsibility, not claiming that's what it is, but that's, could be the town's perception that. Hey, we'll just buy the land and we'll do this. I feel we just need to always have tight messaging and a tight story.
Well, Kevin, would the person who put this together be the one presenting it? I mean, this is not the town presenting this, right?
So the FinCom will make a recommendation on it and then the FinCom will present it. And then I'm pretty certain that the author would likely stand up and. Pitch their case and why and. And then there might be other members of the community who also go to the microphone to provide their insight or to ask questions of either the author or the FinCom or to us.
Um, I mean, I remember the first town meeting that I attended was what I'll call the Elephant Town Meeting. Um, uh, about, at the fair, which was Martha Sanders, who. Was right there, first in line to speak to it. So I don't think she gave an official presentation. Because, you know, her role is putting it on the warrant was done, but again. She was the first in line to speak to it. So I would imagine it would work like that.
Yeah, and that makes sense because that's the person putting it forward. It's not the town, to your, uh, point, Cam, that, that the town has not done research on this. We don't have a story for you. This is a citizen who would like to reach out to other citizens and find out how they feel.
Uh, in, in my opinion, this is primarily, uh, we're going to walk away from this with a feeling of. Where the town would like to go with it. But the two most important words in that whole thing, in my opinion, are non-binding. Where it goes from there is up to us.
And we're basically taking a poll is what we're doing.
Yeah, and it's.
What we're doing.
And, and honestly, it's not even up to us, Boyd, because. There's a, a contract between Caleb and Emerson Center, so. Everything is going to be driven by those two, not, not us.
Sure, Caleb's, Caleb's got an option to buy that place and that's an, that's an existing factor and.
That's a contract.
That's a contract and so this, this whole thing is. Uh, up for debate. On, uh, uh, after Caleb goes away.
All right. What do we have here?
The last bit I would mention is that I inserted very late this evening before we started the, um, election. Um, I need to, I know that a couple of these are two, two members. I think planning board is one that has two people up for elect. Sorry, this is the election portion of the warrant, page nineteen. Um, I know that there's, there's, there's some additional updates. You can see they're in yellow, so I just, I need to verify them before I sent it out with any change, but. There'll be a couple tweaks to that as well. And then you'll notice too that there are the two. Uh, override questions for the ballot as well below there. Um, and that concludes. The rundown of the warrant for tonight's purposes. But for going, next steps going forward, what would be really great is if the, the, the board would. Be able to review, uh, we have a work session, I believe, next Wednesday and. It will, we'll try to have to figure out the master plan committee meeting as well, Mr. Hook, but, um. You know, it's important, next meeting, we are really, really important meeting to kind of discuss, you know, how people will feel about the warrant articles. Um, discuss them in more detail. Like, we've had some really great conversation on some of them, but. There's others we need to touch on. Um, and then. Ultimately, um, start talking about the language. And so if there is anything anyone sees as they're reviewing their, the warrant articles. From a language standpoint, um, feel free to send those over in real time as you're reviewing them. Um, and. Uh, you could send those to Sam, uh, by the end of the day, Monday. Uh, that'll give her, give us up Tuesday to basically insert. Any language changes people like us to consider. And then we'll put that into another version for consideration on la- language changes. Um, there will be, like I said, the highlight yellows, I'll be updating those as we go as well. Um, and then. Um, there's a couple of other places where there'll be, um, some modified, like the liquor license article still needs, the home rule petition still needs to be. Uh, embedded in there and we'll work with KP on that. But, um, so, yeah, the hope is on Wednesday, we'll have a chance to kind of go through any. Edits, language edits, um, and then discuss any articles that anybody would like to, to go into any detail on. Um, about the, the merit of the article.
Um, Kevin, quick question, just, um, for the zoning one, the definitions, those numbers, um, were those put in by KP or did? Uh, the planning board give you those? Were, were those changes at all? The one point one-one and one point eight-seven, did they?
I, yeah, I forwarded the language directly to, to KP.
Okay.
If it wasn't in there when it was the version from the planning board and he added them, then. That's what happened, or if they were already there, then he just left them in. I'm not, I can't, I could find out, but I don't know immediately if it was there originally or not. From, from the planning board.
Okay. Um, and the home rule petition, they're working on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Logistically, one question and then one, I guess, more FYI. Forty-eight articles, forty-nine? Uh, I don't, I, I've been to a lot of town meetings. I don't know if I've ever seen one with that many.
We were pretty close last year. I don't know if we were that high, but we are, we're in the mid-forties, I think, weren't we?
It, 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 it has not been unusual, in my opinion, to get into the high thirties, low forties.
Yeah, and what I'll add is, so last year, our most contentious one was whether or not we were going to plant trees.
Yeah. Both microphones lined up, man.
We might have a few more people lining up to talk.
We should, yeah, that's, just to pivot real quick, I mean, logistically for the meeting. This will be the first year, at least for me and a lot, for a lot of us, where we're actually having a second. A back-to-back meeting in the same location, right? We did it at the Proctor and then we did it at the football field and then we did it out on the common. Then last year, we did it at Masco economic and this year, this coming year, we'll do it at Masco economic again. I've already started to talk with that around the logistics and the numbers, because if we have one override at the schools. We can expect a, a major increase in participation at that meeting. If you have two overrides and potentially a turf field, um, in that, that second one. We can anticipate a significant amount of people. So we're going to be making accommodations assuming. High numbers at this town meeting and so, um. There are a number of articles, there's, it's, it's the largest warrant I've put together with, with you folks, for sure. We've been, like, we talked about high thirties, low forties, this is high forties at this point. There is the potential. Like in years past, one or two might get pulled. Like, we talked about the cemetery as an example, maybe the, maybe the select board wants to pull that one. Um, where it can get a couple of these down, but, um. Yeah, it'll be a big audience and it'll, it'll be, it'll be a robust warrant for sure.
Kevin, how many people does the Masco auditorium hold?
Six hundred people in the auditorium and then the overflow room, I think, is at least a couple hundred people.
Okay.
And I'll ask you a different question, um. Is there a cutoff in time of night when we say we need to take this to a second day or how does that work?
I think everyone would, I think the goal would be to go through and finish.
Well, I know that would be the goal. But that may not be the goal of the three hundred people who line up to speak on whatever.
Well, anybody can make a motion to continue or end the meeting, right?
I think, uh, my understanding is the moderator controls the meeting itself.
Yeah, I don't think people in the audience can just yell out, let's do this tomorrow, you know?
No, that would. Way, way field, that's how we, that's, that, that's what would happen. And then we'd have to come back the Thursday night. We always plan for a Tuesday and potentially a Thursday night.
Well, I remember being there, Boyd, right till what, like eleven-thirty sometimes?
Well, I, as I was gonna say, there's no question that the moderator will control that. But when we get to the point where we're still in business at ten or ten-thirty and it looks like we're halfway through the warrant. Then he's gonna, he's gonna make a decision to do a second night. If he gets to a point where we, where we're at eleven o'clock and there were only three or four more articles. He's going to say, let's vote to extend the time period and let's move on. That's the way it's going to work out, in my opinion.
You know, no, I get, I get that part of it. I was talking about the. You know, if Kevin's talking to Masco about arranging for this, that and the other thing. We might want to mention, hey, there's, maybe it's a very small chance, but hey, is anyone using that auditorium the following night?
Oh, we booked both. We booked tonight each time.
Okay, all right, well, that I didn't.
One thing we can consider too is I've looked at, at old warrants and sometimes I've seen the capitals been put together as a consent agenda. Um, I don't know if that's something the board wants. If we get close, I wouldn't suggest having that conversation tonight or even in the near future. I think once we get a. Better handle on the articles and the overrides and everything. Maybe it's worth that conversation if we want to consider. Finding other, other items within the, um. The, the warrant that might be pooled together. Um, it could be some of the ones at the end about compensated absence. I'm sorry, about the, um, OPEB and stabilization. And the free cash stocks, the tax levy, I mean, those are pretty. Standard of your year and they don't really change. They're based on the financial guidelines, right? So. There's ways we, at towards the end, we could maybe. Find ways if we think it's going to be a longer one, which it certainly will be with the overrides, to kind of create some, some. Time savings if we decided, and it doesn't bind us not to break them out. If anybody objects, we then have to go through them like we would otherwise.
We have got a lot of big ones coming up. I mean, like two overrides. Turf field, purchasing Emerson, you know, even if it's non, non-binding, there'll be a lot of discussion around it, changing all the zoning.
Lease, the lease and the lease. Central.
It's big stuff.
It's a lot of fire engine for a half million. You know, there's some big ticket items here that people who. Aren't familiar with the day-to-day discussions are going to want, you know, to discuss.
The, the, the second thing as an FYI, uh, next week is school vacation week, so I'm going to be out of town, so I think there's. Maybe a fifty percent chance that I'll be on. At the working session, I'll do my best, but, uh, it's possible I won't be there.
Is that the one that conflicts with the master plan? Cause maybe, do we not do that one then? If it conflicts with the master plan and you can't be there, is there? Should we move it or?
How much does this broke the timeline if we, if we skip a week of this, Kevin? We, if we skip a week of this, Kevin.
Um, bear with me. Sam, do you have the calendar in front of you of our next work session? Because I think the next Wednesday's, I think there's a bit of a gap between the next scheduled work session, if I remember correctly.
And by the way, it tells you the difference between Raphael's family and mine, that while it is school vacation week in both of our houses, my entire family is gone, but I'll be sitting in this house alone.
Um, I don't have the calendar, but if I remember correctly, it's the twenty-second and then we have a
We have a general.
Meeting on the sixth and then it's every, so I believe it's the fifteenth after that.
Yeah, we don't have anything on the.
So it's, it's work session and then after that's the fifteenth. So we have a, we have a few weeks or a couple, yeah, a few weeks between meet, work session. So we, if we don't meet next Wednesday, I would probably suggest that we schedule a, a work sessions either next week at a different day or we look at that following Wednesday of the, what would that be? The first, March one.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm a, I obviously can do either, because again, I'm gonna be alone. It's gonna be me and the dog and the parakeets. But um, it does uh, helpfully eliminate our conflict, uh, as Lynn said, with the master plan at the same time, so.
There may be a little bit more time to you to get through the warrant if, if they, if they so choose to, if we go out another week.
Then is there anyone who objects to doing this, taking our work session and moving it back a week?
Moving it from the twenty-second to the first.
Moving it from one week from tonight to two weeks from tonight, is that what we're talking about?
To the first, yeah.
I, I would only be there for an hour unless we pick a. But that's better than no time. Crossing over, crossing over from the Cub Scouts AOLs.
I would, I would be, uh, I've got an engagement in Boston that night and I would be maybe on the early end for.
We can also, here's, here, rather than us trying to suss this out now, uh, unless we feel like we can do it with this one more question, is there an alternate night next, the following week that works? Like a Tuesday? Because I tell you, I'm teaching Thursday, so that doesn't.
I could, I could do Tuesday, the twenty-eighth earlier.
I can't do Tuesdays.
All right, well then, never mind. Um, so we're gonna figure this out. We won't gonna figure it out right now, but we'll figure.
The eighth, too late, pushing it to the eighth?
I mean, I, the my only, my only, we can make anything work. My only concern is that there's still language that I need to, to receive and, and update. And I don't want for version control purposes, you all are working off of this document. My intention is not, is to try to avoid updating another document and then having you send edits off of an old one, if that makes any sense. And I don't wanna lose any steam in getting this moved so that we, we lose momentum. So ideally, if, if not the twenty-second, it, it sounds like Thursday does not work. Um,
Promised me it was okay to miss these meetings every now and then, so. I, I, I did. Want to proceed, I, I don't, don't let me be the reason.
On the twenty-seventh, do we have a?
A Monday regular meeting on the twenty-seventh, but that'll be our first one in three weeks, so that's already a chop full agenda.
Yeah, and Raphael, I didn't want to make you feel badly, but it was also conflicting with the master plan. That's why I thought.
The main reason I clombed on it. I was happy to, to use you as an excuse.
Does there, is there a time? I mean, it's a work session. Would there be time during the, during the day? That would be easier for people. I know we, we've been targeting evenings, but.
On the first, Kevin?
Uh, any time of the first or this, even, I know you said man advice chair, that you said Tuesday nights don't work, right? So that.
Yeah, I, I've got all the planning board and zoning board and my choir is just suffering, so.
I, I know, but I can hear you from here.
When, that Wednesday during the day, I could find, I could find an hour during the day.
I, as can I, given my new circumstances, so. As can I, but my concern is it's not an hour long meeting. If this was our high level and we've gone two hours.
We could get, we could get a good chunk of it done and then meet for another hour at some point during the week and the next week, you know, within the next couple of days.
Yeah, because we can get our edits in, right? And so them and then we're just tweaking at that point.
And we don't have to do it in order, meaning Kevin, if you've got ones where there are language concerns that you were just highlighting, then we can start with those to make sure that that piece of the momentum continues forward.
Yeah, like if, from now, it, right, so it's familiarizing yourself with the warrants, reading them through, seeing the language, if there's edits or the things you want, you don't like how something's phrased in the description, letting it, letting us know. So if are we thinking the twenty-second during the day might work for people? Just bumping the.
No, that's still school.
That's no good.
So we're talking about Monday, uh, uh, Wednesday, I should say, the first at some point during the day.
All right. I can make, we can make that work, because then uh, once I get the, I get the edits, say on the twenty-seventh, end of the day, twenty-seventh, or maybe, yeah, maybe by twelve o'clock on the twenty-seventh, we can incorporate those edits so that we have it ready for the work session on the first and then we'll discuss them, confirm them, and then by that time, I'll probably have new language that I can insert into another version, incorporating yours in, that, that would work well.
Do we wanna throw in a time?
Hone in on a time of day that works best? Cause all, I will say that as we are moving it into the day, earlier in the day is the better for me, but I'm curious what other people have to say.
I concur.
Like nine, like eight?
Either of those.
I, my only concern is that's the day I might follow you with um, um, Peter Flomp and I, it's hard to get those meetings, so.
What time is your meeting, Kevin?
I meet him at eight thirty and then usually I'm back ten o'clock, ten thirty, Sam. That's kind of a safe, so I'm not.
Yeah, and then you have an ARPA team meeting.
We can, I'll move.
We can move that though.
Is eleven safe or is that too late for you, Cam?
No, 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 if it, if it's eleven, that's fine. I have to change something, but so what? I mean, that's.
Yeah, no, eleven works for me. All right, eleven it is.
I'm, I'm the only non-working stiff here, so it works.
Yeah, that's why we didn't really refer to you at any point, Boyd.
That's why I don't talk about this.
All right, so, so we will cancel next week, so we're move it to uh, Wednesday, the first at eleven AM.
And, and does any, does this work? Do we want to do it via Zoom or is there any appetite to do in person?
It's too easy to do Zoom.
All right.
Thank you all. This is great.
All right, I just wanna make one, I just wanna make comment. Uh, and I, I'm sure that Kevin and Sam have already discovered the typos and then, eh, eh, problems with the signature page of the warrant.
Yes.
Okay.
But please feel free to provide those edits, um, nonetheless.
I can do that.
Yeah, it's the old language. I, yeah, the chair vice.
Sam will, Sam will be all over this, I can tell you that.
Yeah, no.
It's got Lynn listed as chairman and Marshall listed as vice chair.
I'm fine with that, if that's how we.
Not, not going into this ATM, that's all right.
Uh, if we can do this in less than a minute, we can call this in even two hours.
Motion to adjourn.
No, no, sorry, one, just one other thing, just a reminder, there's a listening session this Saturday. Boyd and Marshall are on, on. Can I am at the library?
You betcha.
I heard a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. Jackson?
Hi.
Mr. McDonald?
Hi.
Ms. Bermudez?
Hi.
Mr. Hooks and I, we are adjourned and it's still eight o'clock.
Still.
Good night, y'all.
See you guys.
Thanks, everybody.